Hello there, welcome to Shinaaz's Musical Sensation! It's been a long time, well it feels like a long time. I do hope you guys are well. Wherever you're watching me from, thank you, thank you for being a part of my program that airs on Spectrum TV, Channel 96, every Saturday afternoon, 4:30pm, right after Attorney Nareesh Ghani's program. That's right, a legal call of free legal advice, check them out and do remember to call for free legal consultation. Maybe I did love or two, now there's nothing I can do. On the other side of town, her love is waiting on. And she's waving me goodbye, I think my heart is gonna cry. Vo chali, vo chali, dekho pyaar ki gali, usse roke na koi. Vo chali, vo chali, na na na, meri jaan, dekho jaana na waah. Koi pyaar ka luthe ra, luthe na, meri jaan. Vo chali, vo chali, she's found the love that real. Now her wounded heart is healed, finally, finally. Vo chali, vo chali, leaving all her tears behind, only love's on her mind, finally, finally. Bahon me aake tu jaana nahi, aisi rab se main maangun dua. Tere dil se na kabhi khelunga, saare raaz apne main tujhko de dunga. Tere dil se na kabhi khelunga, saare raaz apne main tujhko de dunga. Meri jaan, tu ne mujhko baad le kia, mera likhna haaj ya tere bagh. Tu man meri jaan, main tujh janne na dunga. Main tujhko apni bahon me chhupa ke rakhunga. Tu man meri jaan, main tujh janne na dunga. Main tujhko apni aankhon me basa ke rakhunga. Tu man meri jaan. We love you, thank you so much. And this is Mithri, signing off. Well, it's been a while, I've been missing, well, I've been busy, I must say. With all my friends who are running for this election, upcoming election. Yes, I hope you enjoyed the interview with Judge Grasso. Judge George Grasso has a mission and he's hoping to win the D.A.C. So guys, go out there and vote, your voice is your vote, so go out there and cast your vote. And vote for Judge George Grasso, if you want to see change in our community, you have to vote. Also, today was a very good fundraiser event for Mr. Ethan, that's right, Ethan is also running. And I hope you guys sit down, relax, get your popcorn and listen to all the great things he has to say about our community and what he has in store. Thank you for being a part of my program, Shinaaz's Musical Sensation. Let's take a listen to what Mr. Ethan have to say.
I'm Ethan Felder, I'm a candidate for City Council District 29, which is Richmond Hill, Cube Gardens, Forest Hills and Regal Park. There's an election coming up on June 27th, we're gonna be electing a new council member for Richmond Hill. I'm a labor lawyer, I've been practicing for the last seven years representing working middle-class families across the city of New York. And what we need right now is effective, energetic, proactive leadership to invest in our neighborhood. As I go about campaigning and meeting neighbors doorstep to doorstep, what I hear is we need investment for our quality of life. Whether it's traffic safety along Liberty Avenue or speed bumps to address speeding that's taking place. Or tree-lined streets to make sure that we have the air to breathe. Public safety, the rising crime that we're feeling across our neighborhood, these are my priorities. So I feel like for Richmond Hill to be at its best, it needs the right leadership on the City Council to bring the investment, the attention and the leadership in order to make the neighborhood as good as it can be. That's why I'm running, that's why I ask for your support. The election is coming up on June 27th, I implore you to vote, the future of our neighbors is at stake. I'm Ethan Felder, I'm running to be your next City Council member.
Ethan, could you explain to us a little bit about the City Council position and what does your job and titles when you win?
Absolutely, the City Council introduces and votes on legislation that impacts all aspects of city life. From our schools to our libraries to the buses and subways we rely on to get to work. The City Council negotiates a budget with the mayor and improves its adoption, a hundred billion dollar budget. The City Council votes on important land use decisions that impacts the development of our city. And the City Council provides oversight for city agencies to make sure services are being delivered effectively and efficiently to all our communities. So the City Council impacts every aspect of our daily lives. And that's why having the right leaders in office is so paramount for Richmond Hill and beyond. That's why I'm running to be your next City Council member, prioritizing our schools, a green economy and family sustaining jobs for this generation and the next. The election is coming up June 27th, I ask for your vote, I'm Ethan Felder, I'm running for City Council. I want to thank everyone for taking the time to be here tonight and giving me a chance. You know, this is an unlikely journey. Really, it goes back to a conversation that I had last year with Caroline about a new way forward for our community, for our future, for our children and what that looks like. And from a single conversation, we've gotten to this point in this campaign where we've engaged thousands of people to get on the ballot, talking about issues like fully funding our schools, our quality of life, what that looks like and putting forth concrete solutions to the problems we face. You know, I like to say, these problems that we have, that we talk about, the issues we need to address, they've been there for a long time. And we have to ask ourselves, why haven't things been getting better? And the answer that I say and what I have seen and what we see throughout this campaign, the reason is the state of our local democracy and our leadership in place right now. The fact that there's even a choice in this election is an anomaly. The fact that there's a contested election and the voters have a choice. Because as we've seen in this campaign, the folks who are there right now would rather not have a choice for the voters. That it would just be a rubber stamp of who's there right now and the problems that need to be addressed. From safety along Liberty Avenue to public safety to speeding to noise, these problems would be overlooked.
Favorite halal food truck on Liberty Avenue on 120th Street, now invite you to join them at their brand-new location. That's right, Zaki's Halal Food, stop by for chicken gyro, falafel, lamb over rice, grilled chicken, lamb kebab, chicken kebab, cheeseburger, chicken sandwich, all your falafel and rice platter. Zaki's Halal Food, 108th Street and 101st Avenue. We could cater for your event or cater for your party, so stop by 108th and 101st Avenue for Zaki's Halal Food. King Solomon Logistics, with over three decades of experience, we are the expert when it comes to shipping. We invite you to stop by our brand-new office, 13409 Liberty Avenue. We ship Guyana Trinidad Barbados Jamaica Suriname St. Lucia. Nothing is too big or too small, send a car, bike, tractor, barrel or boxes. Not forgetting your containers, we do money transfer. Love online shopping? Ship them to us and we will forward it to their destination. King Solomon Logistics, 718-658-1187. Best tasting of Guyanese cuisine, stop by Bigwell Bakery and Halal Restaurant, 10708 Liberty Avenue. We have chow mein, fried rice, curry goat, curry duck, curry chicken. All your vegetarian dishes and your pastries made daily for you. Stop by and speak to our friendly staff, thinking of a party? Bigwell Bakery and Halal Restaurant, 10708 Liberty Avenue. We can cater for your event, so call us today and let us cater for your party. The name to remember for all your insurance needs is Main Street Insurance Agency. Home, flood, auto, business and the most important, your life. Stanley Raj, 718-848-7610. We are an independent agent with many carriers, so call us 24/7, 1-800-547-7991. Let us give you a code today. Meline Banquet Hall, 24103 Jamaica Avenue. Beautiful, elegant, exquisite, our venue is fit for royalty, that's what you are. Call us today to book your event, 718-347-8500. Call us to book your reservation, when it comes to wedding, we have the largest bridal suite, suite 16 anniversary parties. Let us cater for your event, we also have rooftop and indoor dining. 718-347-8500, Meline Banquet Hall.
Let's do this! Aankhe kuli ho yah bhan, Di dar unka hota hai, Kaise kahu main oh yaara, ye pyaar kaise hota hai? Aankhe kuli ho yah bhan, di dar unka hota hai, Kaise kahu main oh yaara, ye pyaar kaise hota hai? Turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, everybody come on, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up. Put your hands in the air and turn up, turn up. Aaj hi yaaron kisi pe mar ke dekenge hum, Pyaar hota hai, ye kaise karke dekenge hum? Kisi ke yaadon me kohe hue, khobon ko humne saja liya, Kisi ki bahon me sohe hue, apna usse bana liya. Ay yaar, pyaar main koi, Ay yaar, pyaar main koi, Na jaagta, na sota hai, Kaise kahu main oh yaara, ye pyaar kaise hota hai? Turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, everybody come on, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up. Put your hands in the air and turn up, turn up. Every breath I take, I'll be taking one for you. What my life would be without you, aye, what my life would be without you. Every breath I take, I'll be taking one for you. What my life would be without you, aye, what my life would be without you. Nothing in my life was right, then you came into my life. What my life would be without you, aye, what my life would be without you. Before I met you, I was lost, I never know the meaning of love. I never know that dreams come true, then I experience all with you. Every breath I take, I'll be taking one for you. What my life would be without you, aye, what my life would be without you. Nothing in my life was right, then you came into my life. What my life would be without you, aye, what my life would be without you. Together we stand, together we strong, we gonna prove to everyone who say we was wrong. Our love will keep going up, it never come down, this is not a short thing, it's gonna be long. I gave my heart without hesitate, cause I know how long I had to wait. My heart was beating rapidly, I know you was the one for me. Every breath I take, I'll be taking one for you. What my life would be without you, aye, what my life would be without you. Nothing in my life was right, then you came into my life. What my life would be without you, aye, what my life would be without you.
Yo! Mic check one-two, Productions HQ, and the Mr. Dunia, don't call me the Bollywood data. Feel the higher quality with you and me, girl you want me remedy, make it act really. You done knows here, music movement to the world. I love to be crazy, that's why you have my baby, oh na 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 na. Baby love.
Dil divana, vin sajna ke mane na.
To like this, suffer make you reminisce.
Dil divana, vin sajna ke mane na.
Sweetness!
Ye paghla hai, samjhaane se samjhena.
Oh ladha na!
Ye paghla hai, samjhaane se samjhena.
Feel the rhythm, feel the love, HQ turn it up, turn it up.
Dhak dhak bole, itte utte dole, din re na.
True!
Ye paghla hai, samjhaane se samjhena.
Oh na na na!
Ye paghla hai, samjhaane se samjhena.
Make me talk to you baby girl. Girl you should have known said that, me are the only one when it come to love babes. Me are the dan man, they call me Mr. Dunia. Because you know I will provide the whole world here. I make you feel like a queen when you sitting right there on the throne wherever I go.
It seems like time flies when you're having fun and I'm always having fun in your company. Thank you for supporting my program, thank you for supporting the sponsors that make my program possible week after week on Spectrum TV. That's right, we have our own network, Spectrum TV Channel 96 is our West Indian television programming. So every Saturday, tune in, you never know who you'll be seeing or what event you'll be seeing on Spectrum TV Channel 96, a West Indian channel. Thank you to our sponsors, Bigwell Bakery and Halal Restaurant, 106th Street and Liberty Avenue. Zaki's Halal Restaurant and not forgetting their food truck right there, 123rd Street and Liberty Avenue. Their food truck is located and their halal restaurant is on 108th Street and 101st Avenue. Not forgetting King Solomon Logistics, I've just sent up a shipment of wheelchair walker and hospital equipment to Guyana. And if you guys in need of something or you know someone in need of something, it should be arriving in late July. So do reach out to me, I do have a few hospital beds. And King Solomon Logistics, I do all my shipping with them because it's hassle-free. Pack it up, they'll come and ship it out, or call them and they'll pack it up for you. When it comes to that beautiful venue, it is Meline Banquet Hall. You have to check it out because if you're planning a wedding, that venue is spectacular. They do have outdoor, rooftop, Meline Banquet Hall. And thank you to Main Street Insurance, when it comes to insurance. Mr. Stanley Raj from Main Street Insurance has been taking care of all my clients. Thank you to all the sponsors for making my program possible. Until next time, I hope you're staying well and staying the best you can, until next time. The name to remember for all your insurance needs is Main Street Insurance Agency. Home, flood, auto, business and the most important, your life. Stanley Raj, 718-848-7610. We are an independent agent with many carriers, so call us 24/7, 1-800-547-7991. Let us give you a code today. King Solomon Logistics, with over three decades of experience, we are the expert when it comes to shipping. We invite you to stop by our brand-new office, 13409 Liberty Avenue. We ship Guyana Trinidad Barbados Jamaica Suriname St. Lucia. Nothing is too big or too small, send a car, bike, tractor, barrel or boxes. Not forgetting your containers, we do money transfer. Love online shopping? Ship them to us and we will forward it to their destination. King Solomon Logistics, 718-658-1187. Ramana Jewelry, the same great quality jewelry with excellent craftsmanship that you've trusted for over a decade. Now relocated to 11106 Liberty Avenue. Stop by our showroom for special mortipendants, bangles, diamond rings, birthstone ring, necklace, earrings. We are specialized in American, Guyanese and Indian jewelry. Expert repaired, diamond setting, custom designed. Need a special gift? Say it with Jewelry from Ramana Jewelry, 11106 Liberty Avenue. 718-322-2262, Ramana Jewelry. Favorite halal food truck on Liberty Avenue on 120th Street, now invite you to join them at their brand-new location. That's right, Zaki's Halal Food, stop by for chicken gyro, falafel, lamb over rice, grilled chicken, lamb kebab, chicken kebab, cheeseburger, chicken sandwich, all your falafel and rice platter. Zaki's Halal Food, 108th Street and 101st Avenue. We could cater for your event or cater for your party, so stop by 108th and 101st Avenue for Zaki's Halal Food. Meline Banquet Hall, 24103 Jamaica Avenue. Beautiful, elegant, exquisite, our venue is fit for royalty, that's what you are. Call us today to book your event, 718-347-8500. Call us to book your reservation, when it comes to wedding, we have the largest bridal suite, suite 16 anniversary parties. Let us cater for your event, we also have rooftop and indoor dining. 718-347-8500, Meline Banquet Hall.
For the best tasting of Guyanese cuisine, stop by Bigwell Bakery and Halal Restaurant, 10708 Liberty Avenue. We have chow mein, fried rice, curry goat, curry duck, curry chicken. All your vegetarian dishes and your pastries made daily for you. Stop by and speak to our friendly staff. Thinking of a party? Bigwell Bakery and Halal Restaurant, 10708 Liberty Avenue. We can cater for your event, so call us today and let us cater for your party.